All right, Shalom Akim. First and foremost, I want to give all praise on and glory to Yahweh Shema Al Shai. Call Allah Yahweh Shema Al Shai. Double Honesty to the elders of Great Millstone, or should I say Great Millstone, who rule very well. And bless all the Akim out there that are doing the work sincerity and truth, giving all diligence. Now, uh, the topic of this study session is going to be about Romans, the thirteenth chapter. Uh, the first verse, all the way to the seventh verse. Now, um, the reason, the reason why I'm doing this video is because you have pastors, you know, ministers out there in these churches talking about, you know, I'm using, using, basically using this scripture to justify that, um, the United States government is to be trusted, you know, to, um, to, to not resist that, not resist, um, the government, all right? To give in to the, um, the government, you know? And, um, that's completely going off because wow, wow, well, this is one question, why would you want to, be, be under subjection under a government that's corrupted? Under a government that's, that is basically, um, um, operates, operates in wickedness, you know? Why would you want, why would you want to be subject to that? All right, and, uh, basically I'm going to break down Romans, the thirteenth chapter. Um, and, um, show what it really, what, what, what it's really talking about, you know? And, um, and it goes, and it goes deeper than, you know, um, it, it goes, it goes deeper than what, than what you're seeing right now. Because, um, because you have churches that's under, uh, a tax exemption, and I'm going to get into that later on in the video. But, um, first, I want to go ahead and read through this scripture, which, um, Romans chapter thirteen, verse one through seven. And it reads, "Let every soul be subject unto the higher powers, for there is no power but of the Most High. The powers that be are ordained of the Most High. Whosoever therefore resisted the power resisted the ordinance of the Most High. And they that resist shall receive to themselves damnation. For rulers are not a terror to good works, but to the evil. Would thou then not be afraid of the power? Do that which is good, and thou shalt have praise of the same; for he is the minister of the Most High to thee for good. But if thou do that which is evil, be afraid, for he bearth not the sword in vain; for he is the minister of the Most High, a revenger to execute wrath upon him that doeth evil. Wherefore ye must needs be subject not only for wrath, but also for conscience sake. For for this cause pay ye tribute also, for they are the Most High's ministers, attending continually upon this very thing. Render therefore to all their dues tribute to whom tribute is due, custom to whom custom, fear to whom fear, honor to whom honor." All right? So that's the entire, um, passage right there. But, um, if you read that, you know, you would think that it's talking about the government, but no, that's not what it's talking about. All right? And I'm bringing out a few of these scriptures to, um, um, bring out what, 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 what this passage is really talking about. All right? So this is first Timothy's chapter five verse, let me start at seventeen. All right, so this is to the point right here. Uh, "Let the elders that rule well be counted worthy of double honor, especially they who labor in the word and doctrine." So that's what this scripture is talking about right here, and this is Romans, chapter thirteen, it's talking about the elders, all right? Especially, specifically the elders, um, of Great Millstone, you know? Because they, you know, they labor in word and doctrine, all right? And you can, you know, we, and we, the brothers of Great Millstone, account them as being elders because they've been laboring in this, in this, in this, um, this truth for twenty plus years, you know? So that's why they're accounted for double honors, and this is why they, um, they rule well. And this is why we say, you know, double Honesty to the elders that rule well, because that's, they're, they're worthy of that, all right? They're worthy of their honor. All right, so let's go back to Romans, chapter thirteen. It says, "Let every soul be subject unto the higher powers, for there is no power but of the Most High. The powers that be are ordained of the Most High." Right, so the elders, uh, Great Millstone, which, uh, they, they're ordained of the Most High because the secrets have been, well, the secrets of the scriptures, which are, which are of no private interpretation. They, 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 it's been revealed unto them, all right? The truth has been revealed unto them, that's, that's why we here at Great Millstone, you know, we, we, we promote that, we have one hundred percent of the truth because we do. We don't, you know, we don't be, we don't BS you, we don't, we don't BS you on, on certain topics, you know? We don't, like, we don't, we don't, we don't keep anything back from, um, we don't, we don't keep anything back in general, all right? So we just let it, we, we let, we let the whole, we let, we let the full truth out in, in public, you know? All right, so let me go to verse two. It said, "Whosoever therefore resisted the power resisted the ordinance of the Most High. And they that resist shall receive to themselves damnation." Right, so when you, when you see the elders out there speaking, you know? If you resist it, you know, I'm, I'm specifically speaking to, you know, people that, that are watching this video that's not, you know, not a part of Great Millstone, or you, um, you know, just happen to stop by the video and check, check this video out, you know? Um, just to let you know, like, if you resist, if you just resist, um, what the elders are telling you because it's the truth, you're resisting the truth, man. You're resisting, um, the ordinance of the Most High, all right? You shall receive unto yourselves damnation. Right, so if you come up, if you come up against this truth, man, you know, if you come against the elders and you, um, coming up against the, the, um, the truth, you know? You receive unto yourselves damnation, you're, you're marked, all right? You're marked for, for death. All right? Let me continue on. It said, "For rulers," which, uh, let me go back to verse seventeen. It said, "Let the elders that rule well be counted worthy of double honor," so they can be deemed as, as rulers, all right? Because they rule over you. Said, "For rulers are not a terror to good works, but to the evil. Would thou then not be afraid of the power? Do that which is good, and thou shalt have praise of the same." Right, so you fall in, you fall in the examples, uh, because basically the elders are falling, they're, they're the following examples of, um, uh, Yahweh Shai, man, because that's, that's, that's what, that's what we're striving for, you know? We're striving to be examples, well, we're striving to, um, to do, to do what Yahweh Shai did when he was, um, on earth, you know? Because Yahweh Shai is, is an example, is a great example of that, which, um, people innately call, uh, Jesus, Jesus Christ. You know, that's not his name, but his name is Yahweh Shai. So we try to follow in that example, all right, of, of what he did. And we know when, you know, we're not, we're not perfect, you know, we're, we're all, we're all human. You know, we, we all fall because we're, we're in this flesh right now. All right, we're in these fleshly bodies, all right, we're in, we're in these chains of darkness, because that's, that's what this is, these are chains of darkness. And we're subject to going off, we're subject to, um, to sin. Because we all sinned in the past, you know, but Yahweh Shai was perfect, you know, he didn't sin at all. All right, so back to what I was talking about. It said, "Do that which is good, and thou shalt have praise of the same." So whatever the elders are doing, you should do that too, because they're examples of what, of what to do, you know? Because they're following after examples of, um, Yahweh Shai, all right? So it's all in, it's all, we're all in one accord, all right? So that's what basically is, you have to, you have to be in all in one accord, all right? Because it's also, um, uh, parable in the scriptures, uh, about the body, you know? You can't, you can't have, you can't have the arm, you know, or rebellion against the eye, or you can't have, you know, the leg rebellion against, um, your, whatever body part that you have, you have to all, you have to all work in one, one union, you know? And if that, and if that, um, that part, um, if that part offends, offends you, you know, that's not following protocol, you're supposed to cut it off. All right? And that's, 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 that's spiritual, you know, it's not, I'm not saying go all, go out and, and, you know, cut, you know, cut your arm off or something, but you know, if you have understanding, you'll understand what I'm talking about. But, um, I'll leave that subject for another video. And, um, let me continue on for this one. Uh, "For he is the minister of the Most High to thee for good. But if thou do that which is evil, be afraid, for he bearth not the sword in vain; for he is the minister of the Most High, a revenger to execute wrath upon him that doeth evil." Right, because if the elders see you going, see you going off, man, they're gonna, they're gonna get at you, you know? They're gonna get at you with, with the spiritual sword, which is the Bible, you know? They're going to cut you with scriptures, you know? And that's what this, that's, and that's correction, all right? That's what, that's what they're supposed to do, man, that, that, that's correction. That's straight up what it is, and that's, that's a, that's a form of showing love to your brother, you know? All right, so, uh, actually, I get into those scriptures, like, I, I have other scriptures that's up right now, but I get into those after I, um, get, get this point right here. So this is verse, uh, verse five. "Wherefore ye must needs be subject not only for wrath, but also for conscience sake." All right? "For this cause pay ye tribute also, for they are the Most High's ministers, attending continually upon this very thing, which we give them account of, of double honors." All right? "Render therefore to all their dues tribute to whom tribute is due, custom to whom custom, fear to whom fear, honor to whom honor." All right, so back to first Timothy, chapter five, verse seventeen. All right? And start at verse eighteen, "For the scripture saith, Thou shalt not muzzle the ox that treadeth out the corn; and the laborer is worthy of his reward." Right, so the elders have been laboring this thing for, like I said, twenty plus years, so they're, they're worthy of the reward, all right? They're worthy of that, that honor. And if you go up to verse one, I'm gonna bring out verse one, it says, "Repute not an elder, but entreat him as a father, and the younger man as brother." All right, so they basically look at it as, you know, our, our fathers, all right? Because they have more wisdom than we do, and we learn under them. All right, so you're supposed to not rebuke, rebuke him, rebuke the elders, all right? So I'm gonna get, um, okay, and, and another thing about it. Um, the elders, you know, because I'm, I'm, it's, it's a good thing that, you know, uh, my brother, you know, uh, he actually came up to me and said, "Well, um, you know, you have elders in the church as well," you know? But I was basically trying to tell him that, no, the elders that are in the church are not laboring. They're not going, they're not doing the same things that the elders of Great Millstone are doing. There's no other, there's no other elders in any church that goes out into the highways and the hedges to, um, and go out, go out in the highways in general and speak to their people. No, there's no other elders in, in the church that do that, man. All right? And this is an example right here, this Luke, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-three. "And the Lord said unto the servant, Go out into the highways and hedges, and compel them to come in, that my house may be filled." Right, so that's what, that's what the servant is supposed to do, man. That's what it means to be, that's what it means to be a prophet, all right? Go out and speak to your people. And that's what, and that's what the elders have been doing, all right? That's what it means to be an elder set up by the Most High, Yahweh Shema Al Shai. That's what it means to be, that's what it means to be an elder, all right? And let me get Ezekiel, chapter thirty-three. "If when he seeeth the sword come upon the land, he blow the trumpet and warn the people." Right, so you see the, you see the destruction coming, you see the prophecies are coming to pass, you see the prophecies that are, that are about to happen, and you blow the trumpet and warn the people, right? And that's, that's what a real prophet is supposed to do. All right, you see the sword come, and you blow the trumpet and warn the people, that's what you're supposed to do, you warn the people. Who else is warning the people other than the elders of Great Millstone? And let me give you an example of prophecies that I'm talking about, like the market of beasts, which is the RFID chip. Uh, martial law, uh, race, race wars, um, famines, uh, the destruction of America, the, the, um, the coming, the coming of the kingdom of Yahweh Shema Al Shai. All right? Who else is, who else is warning you about, about all those prophecies, man? No, no other elder other than Great Millstone is warning about that, man. All right, so I'm gonna get this next one, so this is Isaiah, chapter twenty-eight, verse nine. "Whom shall he teach knowledge, and whom shall he make to understand doctrine? Them that are weaned from the milk and drawn from the breast." And really, um, the people that are going to be able to understand the knowledge and the doctrine, the true knowledge and the true doctrine, is gonna be the elect, all right? The one hundred and forty-four thousand of Israel. They're going to understand this knowledge, and they're gonna understand the doctrine, and they're gonna follow suit. All right? Said, "For precept must be upon precept, precept upon precept, line upon line, line upon line, here a little and there a little; for with stammering lips and another tongue will he speak to this people." Right, so precept must be upon precept, all right? Line upon line, here a little and there a little. All right, and that's, that's, this is what, this is what it means to have precept upon precept and line upon line, right? You have Romans, all right, you have first Timothy's, you have Luke, you got Ezekiel, you got Isaiah, you got Jeremiah. All right, because this is a big puzzle piece, and you're supposed to put the pieces together, all right? So that's what Isaiah, chapter twenty-eight is talking about, and I'm basically speaking to, um, uh, the people who are just happen to, um, come on this video, you know? Just, just now tuning, just now tuning in to, um, you know, the study session. But that's what, that's what it means, all right? "For with stammering lips and another tongue will he speak to this people." Right, and let's look up that word, stammer, all right? It should, it should be la, uh, la augg, la i. Mocking, all right? Mocker. Speaking in a barbarous or foreign tongue. All right, gesture, buffoon, mocker. Yeah, that's basically it. So speaking in a barbarous or foreign tongue, uh, gesture, uh, buffoon, mocker. So basically, speaking with stammering lips, uh, is to mock, all right? So when you mock someone, or you, um, you know, you're speaking a barbarous, barbarous language, you know? Because remember, uh, Paul, Paul said, uh, Paul said, "Though I be rude in speech, but not in knowledge." Um, actually, let me get that. Because that's a perfect example with, with stammering lips, um, what that mean by stammering lips in, in another, in another tongue. All right, um, I believe it's, uh, I'm trying to remember. I just typed in rude in speech because this, the scripture escapes me right now. All right, second Corinthians, chapter eleven, verse six, all right? It's, he said, this is, this Paul speaking, "But though I be rude in speech, yet not in knowledge; but we have been thoroughly made manifest among you in all things." One hundred percent truth, all right? So there you go. "For with stammering lips and another tongue will he speak to his people." Right, so they're gonna, because we're, we're men, all right? We're men, we're not, we're not choir boys, all right? We're not, we're not these soft, we're not soft speaking, um, Israelites, man, we're not soft speaking prophets, man. When we give you the truth, man, we give it to you raw and uncut. All right, we hold nothing back. So that's basically, that's basically what I wanted to bring out. And another thing that I want to bring out about, uh, the book of Ezekiel. Uh, let me bring this, uh, Ezekiel, chapter thirty-three, verse six. "But if the watchman seen the sword come, and blow not the trumpet, and the people be not warned if the sword come, and take any person from among them, he is taken away in his iniquity; but his blood will I require at the watchman's hand." Right, so that's basically it, man. If you're not doing this work, then he's gonna require that blood from you, all right? He's gonna blame it on you, saying that you did, you didn't take any action to go out and warn your people. All right? So I'm gonna ask this question again. What, what other elder other than the elders of Great Millstone, what other elder has gone out and, um, warned their, warned their people? Warned their people, fully warned their people about what's to come, you know, giving them one hundred percent truth, teaching them about the scriptures, the true meaning of the scriptures, the, the, the truth of the scriptures. All right, who else has done that, other than the elders of Great Millstone? All right? And I'm bringing this out, this is basically, um, pointing at the, um, the pastors, man. Because these pastors were not, they're not, they're not, they're not following the doctrine, man. They're not putting precept upon precept, you know? They're not, um, they're not blowing, they're not blowing the trumpet, man. They see the sword come, but they're not blowing the trumpet. All right? And you know, some of them, some of them don't see it. I, I'll, I'll attest to that, you know, some, some of them don't have that understanding of what's to come, some of them do. And they still will not warn their people, why? It goes, it goes, it goes deeper than that, and I got a link, and I got, um, actually, I got an article right here that, um, that explains why they don't do that. All right? So this is Jeremiah, chapter twenty-three, verse one. "Woe be unto the pastors that destroy and scatter the sheep of my pasture, save the Lord. Therefore thus saith the Lord, Power of Israel, against the pastors that feed my people: Ye have scattered my flock and driven them away, and have not visited them. Behold, I will visit upon you the evil of your doings, saith the Lord." Right, uh, let me continue on. "And I will gather the remnant of my flock out of all countries whither I have driven them, and will bring them again to their foes, and they shall be fruitful and increase." And actually, this verse right here, um, goes with Revelations, chapter, um, let's see, Revelation chapter, I believe it's eleven, I believe. All right, so like I said, and that, this is verse right here, this is verse three. Um, this goes, this goes with Revelation, chapter, um, seven, verse nine, all right? Said, "A great multitude of all nations, kingdoms, towns, and people." All right, so I'll let you, um, look at that, look at these two verses right here, Jeremiah, chapter twenty-three, verse three. And Revelations chapter seven, verse nine, and you can see that they, they compare with each other, all right? So I just wanted to point it out, point that out real quick. But back to what I was saying, um, it started verse four. "And I will set up shepherds over them which shall feed them, and they shall fear no more, nor be dismayed, neither shall they be lacking." Wow, neither shall they be lacking, saith the Lord. Wow, okay. Uh, that's, that's pretty much it for, um, this one. It said, "Woe be unto the pastors that destroy and scatter the sheep of my pasture." All right? It said, "You have not visited them." So basically, um, this is, this is the reason why they won't, uh, this is the reason why they, why they don't, they don't reveal, they don't reveal unto you stuff that they know. I'm talking about the pastors that do know this, but they, they won't tell you, all right? So this is right here, is a five oh one C three charter, all right? And this is basically a summary of what it is. So section, uh, five oh one C three is the portion of the U.S. Internal Revenue Code that allows for federal tax exemption of nonprofit organization. Specifically, those that are considered public charities, private foundations, or private operating foundations. It is regulated and administered by the U.S. Department of Treasury through the Internal Revenue Service, IRS. All right? There are other five oh one C organizations indicated by categories five oh one C one, five oh one C twenty-eight. And that's basically it, but it's a, it's a, it's a tax exemption charter, all right? And, um, I'm gonna go all the way down to, um, I'm gonna go all the way down to compliance, all right? So actually, no, there's a, there's another one that I wanted to, here it is, restrictions on, um, activities. All right? Um, I guess I'll, yeah, right here, um, highlight this. All right, so further lobbying, propaganda, or other legislative activity must be kept relatively insubstantial. Intervention in political campaigns or the endorsement, anti endorsement of candidates for public office is strictly prohibited. Right, so even, even if you, um, you're under a five oh one C three charter, you can't speak out against, you know, camp, political campaigns, or you can't, you can't even speak out against the government, man. You can't, and that's where, that's where they got set up for restrictions, all right? It says, "Strict rules apply to both the activities and the governance of these organizations." All right, so you can't speak, you can't speak out against the government at all, all right? If you do, then they, they'll take away the five oh one C three, and that's why they, that's why, you know, the churches don't even say anything about the government, all right? Most of them, most of them are under the five oh one C three charter. I say about eighty percent about, um, under the five oh one C three charter. All right? So, and let me skip down to the compliance. Having five oh one C three status comes with compliance requirements, the most obvious of which is operating the organization within the IRS regulations. In addition, most organizations must file some version of Form nine nine zero with the IRS each year. All right, additional compliance requirements exist at the state level, all right? So, so it said, you have to operate, the, the organization has to operate within the IRS regulations, all right? So you can't, you can't speak out, well, one of those regulations, of course, you can't speak out against government because most, most of churches don't speak out against, you know, about, about the government. I said, most of them, not, not all of them. Um, they don't, they don't speak out against government, you know? They don't speak out against any, any political candidates or anything like that, or, or orders put out by the government. All right? So that's basically why they don't bring out, you know, most, most of the truth about the scriptures, all right? Because the government has them on lockdown. And it's, and it's, and they, they put, they, they put their own church under the five oh one C three, man, so you know, those church pastors, man, they, they, man, they, man, they're wicked, man. They're straight up wicked, man. They keep the truth away from the people, man. That's why, that's, I stopped, I stopped going to church a long time ago, man. Well, not a long time ago, I stopped going to church for like, what, years, man, like, two or three years ago. All right, I stopped going. And guess what happened? I ran, I ran, I ran to, um, Great Millstone, man. I ran to the elders. And I learned the truth, the, the truth of the scriptures, man. I learned, I'm, I'm, and I'm still learning under them, all right? I learned with, I learned, man, I learned a lot of things from the, um, from the elders, man. I learned a lot of things from Great Millstone in general, all right? You won't learn, you won't learn any of this, this information, you won't learn any of this, of this knowledge or this wisdom from anywhere else other than Great Millstone, all right? And I'm just stating, I'm just stating reality, because that's how it is, man. All right, and, um, I wanted to bring out another scripture that I had. Uh, scripture where it speaks, where it speaks about, um, do the work of the evangelist. And actually, the word evangelist goes back to the word, um, herald, all right, to herald. And I looked up the word, um, herald, and it says, "A sign that something will happen, an official messenger in the past." So that's basically a prophet in general, man. So, that's basically a prophet in general, man, that's what a herald is. Alright? One that precedes or foreshadows, one that conveys news or proclaims. One who actively promotes or advocates, right? So that's, that's what it means, that's what a prophet is, man. Alright? Yeah, that's basically it, um, that's, that's what I wanted to bring out on this subject. Yeah, that's pretty much it, alright? So now you should have a better understanding of what Romans chapter thirteen verse one through seven should be. Just talking about the elders, alright? The elders who are out there continually doing his work in sincerity and truth. Who has been laboring for, for years, years on end, and is still doing the work to this day. That's who, that's what this scripture is talking about, being subject to, alright? So, once again, I want to give all praise and glory to Yahousha. Call halla Yahousha. Double L, a double honors, and much love to the elders of Great Millstone, who rule very well, who has been laboring this thing for, for twenty plus years. Who was continuing, who was continuing to do this work for years on end. Enduring it to the end, until the day Yahousha comes back, which is our Lord and Savior. And um, and bless us all, y'all came out there doing the work in sincerity and truth, giving all diligence to make your calling and election sure. Keep the faith, and saying that, I'm gonna say, Ash, shalom.